Well, good evening. I would like to call the Ferndale City Council meeting to order for Monday, June 25th, 2012. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, could you call the row, please?
Councilmember Scalloway.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Piana.
Here.
Lennon.
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here, yes, thank you. We have a quorum. In fact, we have a full house. Next order of business would be the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, additions, deletions to the agenda this evening?
Move to accept the agenda. Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Scalloway. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Scalloway.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Next on our agenda is three presentations this evening, all of them good news presentations, and eager to hear from our presenters this evening. The first one being the Ferndale Community Foundation Award of Grants. Anytime money's distributed, that's a fun night. And Greg Pollica and Helen Weber are here from the foundation to announce this year's grant recipients.
Good evening. Thank you, council, mayor. I'm Greg Pollica, the Chair of the Ferndale Community Foundation, and this is Helen Weber. She's our treasurer. This year, we received 11 grants totaling $17,238, but we can only grant out 8,000, so a few organizations we had to deny. The requests came in under several categories. One came under health care, three under education, three under human services, one under the arts, and three under infrastructure assistance. And the five grant recipients, the first one is the Ferndale Historical Society. We are granting them $1,573, and that's for the security and preservation of historical material. So if a representative or two could come up from...
Hold for pictures.
Yeah, hold for pictures.
Thank you.
The next organization is the Ferndale Public Library. We are granting them $2,500 for sensory and adaptive toys and materials for special needs children. If we have a representative from the Ferndale Public Library? Next is the Ferndale Recreation. We're granting them $1,627 for removable rims, basketball rims for the parks. They started a pilot project a while back, removing the rims because they were having some safety issues in some of the parks, and it was a great success. So now they're going to install additional rims in other parks so that kids can play during the day and adults can have some peace and quiet at night.
Helen, you must have a really big checkbook.
The next group is the Ferndale Youth Assistance. This is for an anti-bullying and counseling program where the program works with both the students and the adults, the parents, to work on some issues dealing with bullying behavior. Do I have someone from that program? Nope, okay. We'll make sure we get that check to them. And finally, the Ferndale Goodfellows. We're granting them $900, and that is for their holiday program for gifts for children and meals for shut-ins. And we have... We're able to support these projects through the generous donations of residents and business owners via the fundraising programs that we have, such as The Taste of Ferndale, an event we hold during Mardi Gras, and recently Ferndale Pride, of which we're the host organization, and we work with several other organizations throughout the city to put on. We also have some programs that focus on bringing our community together, such as Clean the Ferndale Up, it's a brand-new event that was chaired by Matt Nowatzik this year. Kind of helps deter some blight and put a little shine on the city. And we also have a kickball challenge that we do. We bring various organizations and groups together to play a friendly game of kickball. And Ann Heller actually called me up this morning and said that we're slated for mid-October and wanted to know if I knew of anybody who wanted to chair that event. I don't, but if anybody's interested, you can contact myself or Ann Heller. And finally, this work couldn't be done without an incredible board of directors, so I want to acknowledge, if you could stand up, my Vice President, Jeannie Davis, our Secretary, our Secretary, Julia Music, and Board members, County Commissioner Craig Covey, Councilman Dan Martin, Councilwoman Melanie Piana, Kim Beebe, Melinda Couples, George Chap, Matt Nowatzik, and Judy Palmer.
Thank you, Greg. Thanks, Helen, very much for all your hard work. Our next presentation is from our Downtown Development Authority, and I see Chris Hughes in the house. Chris, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council, everybody at home. I never get this right, Cheryl. Okay. Chris Hughes, Ferndale DDA, Communications and Marketing Manager. I'm here to give you an update on all the things that are happening downtown, and there's plenty of them, but I'll try to be brief so we can get out and enjoy the summer night. One thing that everybody's probably noticed is we've got a little bit of construction going on at Allen and West Troy, and that will be completed by July the 4th. We're working very hard to make that particular interesting intersection a lot safer for everybody, pedestrians and bicyclists and cars and everything. So you're going to see some nice changes there that'll make it easier to get across. It'll be a permanent three-way stop, make it much better moving around in that part of town. Another thing that I have to mention is that we are going to lead the charge on July 18th from 9:00 to 2:00 for Oakland County's Training Wheels Workshop. We'll be doing bicycle ride through Ferndale to assess on-road bicycling facilities and what we might do to make them better and make bicycling and vehicles share the road and share facilities more effectively. And that includes MDOT, the city, the Ferndale Recreation Department, the Downtown Ferndale Bike Shop, and the Ferndale DDA are all collaborating on that great day of riding around town and seeing how we can make things better for all of our cyclists and the cars that try to work around them. I finally am here to really promote something that we are very, very excited about. It's Art Town, the event. And this is going to be the social event of the summer. Really, it really and truly is. So get out your black ties and your sneakers, which means get a little spiffier, but be very comfortable. It's going to be a lot of walking around. We have a great evening planned. It's a fundraiser for public art. It's going to totally benefit that. We've had generous cooperation from 10 different restaurants, six toast locations. They're all on our website, and it will take me a long time to mention them all. We're going to have a fabulous dessert bar at the Rust Belt Market, a signature cocktail music by the Nighthawks Jazz Orchestra. We'll be able to see all the art that's being installed, including participating in the final reveal of the 11th piece in front of Rust Belt Market at between 8:30 and 9:00. So we really want to encourage everybody to come out and get involved. I think you've seen there's been plenty of art going in around town. It's been exciting to watch it unfold as each piece goes in, and people go, "What is that?" And other people go, "Oh, I love it. It's my favorite thing ever." So we want people to get engaged and be a part of the art action that's happening here. Art Town is the DDA's and Downtown Ferndale's celebration of the creative culture that has made us such a great downtown. It's embracing all of our entrepreneurs and all of our artists and everybody that's thinking outside of the box here, including the city and the rec department and everybody that's involved to make things happen even when times are challenging. And we encourage everybody to come on down. You can get your tickets at downtownferndale.com or calling us at 248-546-1632. So there's two easy ways to do it, and we will sell tickets at the door. So that's all I have to say, but come on down. It's Thursday night. I keep forgetting to say that. Thursday, June 28th, 6:00 at 10:00 p.m. Thank you.
And our final presentation this evening is the June Beautification Award. Peggy Snow is with us tonight. Good evening, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and everyone. Yes, these are the June Beautification Awards, and the first one is the commercial, the Green Daffodil at 624 Lirnoy's. This was nominated by a resident last year, but it came in so late that we were really done. And so we held it over for this year, and it looks just as nice as it did last year. And so we were happy to have had that resident bring this to our attention. It looks lovely over there. And the second one is Diane and Dave Smith at 744 Pearson Street, Ferndale. They actually had a few neighbors that nominated them, and the one nomination form said, "Dave's Garden is always colorful, creative, and beautiful." And the picture shows that it's a lovely corner lot, you know, a lot of flowers, front and back. So that was another one nominated by residents. And the third, or the second residential one, is 401 East Oak Ridge. That's Nancy and Richard Jackson, and they've only lived there two years, but they've widened the sidewalk and the steps, and they painted. Actually, it's on the next block from me, so I see it often, so I'm familiar with it. It was just a plain white house for many, many years. And so now they have like a two-tone which really catches your eye, and they opened up an enclosed porch, and the whole front yard is flowers, so they really did dress the house And this year, we're going to have prizes for the winners. Last year, in September, and we give out the certificates in September, well, Eckert's Greenhouse on Ryan, between 14 and 15 Mile Road, had contacted us, and they had gift certificates for the beautification award winners, which was very, very generous of them. They were $25 ones. I thought that was very nice. But it was too late for us to pass them out at the meeting here. We didn't have them yet. And so they were mailed out to the residents at the end of the year like that. So we will have them hopefully in September when we give out the certificates, and they'll be able to use them. And also, we're going to have a drawing at the end of the year for gift certificate to a local restaurant. This was Byron Fatidhi's idea, and he always has great ideas, and we thought that that would be a nice thing to end the year with, something like that. And I've had a few people asking me, "How do we get a beautification award? How does somebody, you know, go about being nominated?" Well, the first step is being nominated, you know. It's really a nominate-your-neighbor program. People on the commission, we do write around and look for attractive homes, but these three people that won tonight, they're all nominated by neighbors, and that's what we kind of like your help to help us. And there's forms. I put them out at the library, the City Hall, the Kulick Center, and they're also on the city's website. I looked it up last night. It's under forms and permits, and you can go down and fill the form out right there or print it out probably. Or you can call the city yard at 248-546-2519, and then they pass the information along to us. So there's lots of ways to get a house nominated, and if you see one that you think is nice looking and whatever, let us know the address, so we'll know about it, too. And after a house is nominated, then we, members take turns, we go around, and we take pictures of all the homes that are nominated, and then the pictures are brought to the meeting, and we vote on them then. So if you're nominated in June, you stay in for the whole rest of the year, whether maybe until you're selected or until the end of the season. So, you know, you have like four-month chance if you're nominated in June. So that's how the process works, and we hope lots of people will send in forms, nominations forms, for neighbors or friends that they know have an attractive yard. And I'll be back in July with that month's winners. Thank you.
Peggy, as always, thanks. Thanks, Peggy, for all your hard work. All right, that is our last presentation this evening. Although, actually, I saw County Commissioner, County Commissioner Craig Covey, we usually put you in under presentations when you're able to join us. How are you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for being a moment late tonight. I do have a neat program that might benefit those in our district here. It's called My Ride Two. This is a transportation assistance program, and it's for seniors and adults with disabilities. It is a program that connects you with all the various programs that can provide rides. If you don't have a car, you need a ride to the doctor, to the store, et cetera. The phone number, and I'll say it slowly, is 855-697-4332. And again, what they do is set you up with various programs. They'll find the best, most efficient program. There's also a website if you want to go that route. It's www.myride, the number two, dot com. And Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 4:00 p.m., seniors and those with disabilities can get rides. I wanted to thank the Ferndale Community Foundation. I was to be here to help present the checks, but also as president of Ferndale Youth Assistance. I need to get one of those also. But we appreciate the support. Mr. Pollica, you're here. Thank you. We really appreciate the Ferndale Community Foundation. Real quick, Pride Festival last weekend, total success, zero problems, a lot of fun was had by all, a lot of work. We'll have a full report later on in another meeting, but over 120 people helped put on this event, volunteers of every stripe. Again, no problems, no issues, no one was hurt, nobody was arrested, which I always think is a good thing. I want to thank the DPW, who were marvelous. The fire department was great. The police department was wonderful. The folks didn't want to leave, so we stayed about a half hour later, but it was really, really good. Michael Larry was especially helpful. If you could share that with Michael Larry, he's a great guy that helped us out. We will have final numbers. We raised over $10,000 for the charities. We'll announce those, and we believe that with approximately 10,000 people coming to downtown over the four-day period, we helped bring a quarter million dollars to our local businesses. So, there you go. I also thank the city, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but I thank the city for the Vincent Chin Memorial Resolution. We took that same, similar resolution to the county and had representatives of the Asian and Chinese community come and accept. It was a very moving program, and I did attend that program in Madison Heights on Saturday, and I really appreciate the city council supporting that also.
Happy to do so. Thanks for all the work.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Pride was wonderful. Great job, by to you and the 120 volunteers.
You were great, Mr. Mayor, and we had a lot of elected officials, the most that I've ever seen. We had mayors and state representatives and judge candidates and all sorts of good folks that came from all over. So again, I thank all the city staff and the council members that were there. It was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner. All right, that concludes our presentations this evening. Next order of business is a public hearing, and we're doing these a little different. We're going to introduce the public hearings before we ask the public to comment on them. And so I think Matt Davis from Giffords Webster, if you don't mind coming up, and maybe just for those who don't know, give a very brief overview of our proposed sidewalk replacement program for 2012.
Okay. The program that was originally put together was divided into 10 separate sidewalk districts, each of which comprised approximately 10% of the city. This year, we are doing the 2012 Sidewalk District, which basically encompasses an area from West 8 Mile to West 9 Mile, and then from Republic to Pine Crest, with a few areas east of Pine Crest that are also included. And basically, what it is, is going through and evaluating the sidewalk based on criteria previously adopted by the city in order to try and make the sidewalks a safer place for people to go back and forth. This year, the low bid, we had five bids come in. The low bid was Georgie Concrete, who also performed the replacements last year. And if, I just wanted to note that I do have a sheet in the back there where if you have an individual question regarding your property, feel free to sign that, and we'll get in contact with you and answer any questions you have.
So Matt, hang tight there, and I will just add, if you're wondering if you're in that area of the city, you would know because you got a letter telling you that the program was going on. If you didn't get a letter, that's because you're not included in that section of the city this year. So with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council on the 2012 Sidewalk Replacement Program? Please, just step forward, sir, and come on up to the mic. Give us your name and address, if you will.
My name's Dan Byber. I own a vacant lot at the corner of Republic and Pearson. The address is 1130, 1736 Pearson.
1736?
I just wanted a clarification about what is meant by the options for those with corner lots. Can someone explain to me what those options are?
It affects your ability to apply for a hardship. So if you're on a corner lot and you have, let me make sure I'm...
Oh, it's tied into the hardship issue?
That's correct. Right? If you have a corner lot...
I think you're automatically approved for a hardship. Stretch the payments out over three years. Reduce, you know, low market rates.
That's correct.
And who would be the contact person for, contact person and number for questions?
Not for hardships, right? That's back to us.
That'd be the hardship committee.
To you, April. So April, why don't you give your, April Lynch is our, sorry, I almost said McGrath, is our city manager. And April, you want to give him your number?
And we'll be able to get you in contact with the right people to address that.
And then for other questions regarding the...
Sure, we'll be able to field those for you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else from the public for the 2012 Sidewalk Replacement Program? Good evening.
Good evening. Joanne Woltak, 1615 West Marshall. What my concern is, now, our section, this is our second time now. The first time, when they replaced flags, they were put in about half inch higher than the existing. Now, my flag is too low, and we went through the neighborhood for several houses, and within six houses, there were three of them that were marked exactly that way. A little concerned about that, you know, I mean, we're talking 50 bucks, basically. For me, it's not a big deal, but it is when it's continued throughout. Plus, that same flag, the replaced flag from 10 years ago, is also wider than what the existing sidewalks were, by about an inch. And it's just a little bit, it's like, okay, it says every eight, 10 years, we're going to have another flag because they're going to put them a little bit higher. I'm also noticing some right out in front of City Hall that are even higher than that. So there's a little concern about that.
Matt, we'll let the engineer address that.
I haven't, last year was my first year on the project. We do have a full-time inspector out on the job. If it is incorrect from the get-go, obviously, the contractor is responsible and correct any deficiencies that exist.
Yeah, because I'm also concerned about a lot of people that just had them done 10 years ago that are looking really scaly and nasty and are all marked as well. And this is, as I say, it's not affecting me personally, but I am seeing this and that the old ones are, not even the old ones. My sidewalk is from 50 years ago or more, and it's perfect. I have no problems with it at all. Yeah, I'm very lucky, but a number of other ones have had, and the ones that were just replaced 10 years ago look bad. So I'm just a little concerned about that for my neighbors.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Mike Kuznier from 1053 Marshfield, and I also, too, have a disagreement with my assessment. I have pictures here saying, and maybe we need to not realize or not accept the lowest bidder. I don't know if that is the thing that we do, but, you know, the quality should be of utmost concern. On our streets, below our aprons, they're all deteriorating, and there's nothing going on about that. And I think that would be more of a, you know, a injury consideration or liability consideration as these sidewalks. I have pictures that my sidewalk, I believe, was sort of, there was a gas line put in right there, and the, I don't know, whatever program was prior to the one 10 years ago before I owned the house, someone tried to do a patchwork job. Now, I think someone's trying to make me pay for it, and I disagree with that. I had the DPW come out. He agreed with me. He says, "Hey, what's going on?" And he walked away. I haven't heard anything again. Then I got the letter, and I just felt I should come out and express my concern over this, and I appreciate your time.
Is that something that he can sign up for and have someone from your shop take a look at and talk to him about? He's got a sign-up sheet back there. If you want to just put your name on there, they'll come out and look at it and chat with you. Sure, of course. And by the way, just for clarification, it's lowest bidder, but it's lowest qualified bidder. So we don't even accept bids from people that we don't judge as qualified to apply, just to be clear about that. Anyone else who would like to address council in this public hearing this evening? Sure? Come on up.
Sherri Wood, 400 Stratford. And my estimate, it said, the one thing I question is, it says stubbers joints less than one inch vertical separation with no defects will be horizontally saw cut for 55/35. My charge is like $202.50, and I have exactly the stubber that says one inch vertical separation. It has a half an inch only of a stubber. It's less than an inch, and on one of them, it's less than that. And I was told by my neighbor that they don't totally remove the whole slab because they could break it or whatever, because it's not broken, there's nothing wrong with it. It's just got that little bit. And I said, "That's incredible that they would want me to pay $200 to..." He said, "It's what they do. They saw it." Is that right?
That is correct.
They saw it, even it. And my dispute is, nothing wrong with the policy, it's just that I think that it's wrong estimate on my, the two. They were, I had three replaced, I guess maybe five years or something, quite a while ago.
Ten years, probably, so now, yeah. Time line. Every 10 years.
Yeah, and so that I didn't even question, but this, I thought was, it doesn't even seem like it could possibly be questionable, that it's a stubber even. I don't see how you could even trip your toe on it. But that was my question. If it's just shaved, I think that my, I would qualify for the 55/35 instead of $100.
Looking at our end here.
Yeah, and the best thing to do would be to sign up, and we can set a time where we can meet and take a look at it, go over everything, and just verify that everything is accurate and go from that point.
Okay. I felt a little foolish coming down here.
Oh, no, not at all. And we'd be happy to set up an appointment to come out and take a look at it with you. Yeah.
Sign up back there.
Yes. Great. Sherri, thank you. Thank you for coming. Yes, sir.
I'm Dale Robertson from 1278 Leroy Street, and similar to some other comments here as well, that back in the fall, the gas company came through my street, I'm sure many others as well, replacing the gas mains, and it just so happens that that project was being concluded right about the time that the inspections occurred. But it seems that there was no coordination between the city inspector and the gas company who actually caused the damage that now I'm having to be paid, having to pay for its repair. And... And the markings occurred at the time that the gas main replacement was concluding. And so my expectation was that it was just part of the project. And it was months later than when I received the letter about the city replacement program that I realized that really there was nothing to do with each other. And it was only through my calling and complaining with the gas company that I actually was able to get some action and have the... So in fact, my sidewalks have already been replaced.
By the gas company?
By the gas company.
Yeah, go ahead and address.
I know I have had a couple calls on it. A lot of the gas main breaks...
And go to the microphone, just so that everybody can hear you.
A lot of the gas main breaks, I personally don't know about. Typically, you know, when they have a service break, they have to go out and repair it. A lot of times, well, I never hear about it. And Dan, do you guys, sometimes, if you see them? So in a situation like that, if it's repaired, then, and it's done properly, then it won't get assessed. It will only get billed if there was actually work done. And it's, you know, so if it was previously done, we're not going to remove it, just replace it, obviously. So if that's the case, then we can look at it. And if, at that point, when they replaced it, that it's still out of compliance, then it's a matter of, I, you know, we can get a hold, try and get a hold of consumers and have them come back out and do it correctly.
So people in that situation where their sidewalk's been replaced, but they have a letter from you, do they need to contact you proactively? Would that be helpful, or should they just assume that...
It would definitely help. It would definitely help and save my inspector some work. But obviously, you know, he's, my inspector's looking at a sheet, and that's fairly detailed on where each flag is. And so he can kind of put two and two together pretty easily. But it does help just with a follow-up phone call, just so we can verify it and at least take that portion off the list.
Okay. And speaking for my neighbor as well, who is away, has been away on a work assignment for a year, so she's not even in the country, but yet hers was replaced as well.
Okay.
So the damage was even more severe than mine. And the company, the gas company, wasn't coming out. They weren't going to come out until I called...
I believe I spoke with her.
Her name is Lori, A1270.
Yes, I have talked to her, and that has been taken care of, so.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming out, Dale. Anyone else who would like to address council this evening?
I'm not going to address the council, but I have some photographs here of the sidewalks. And my driveway, which has been destroyed by a city-owned tree. Now that Mr. Davis has said that we can sign a sheet and set up something, I will handle it that way. But I have a question on the policy. It used to be, the city would come out and replace the sidewalk and determine if it was the fault of the city, the trees between the road and the sidewalk that raised the panels. The last time you did our home, you replaced three panels. All three of those panels are raised by roots that I pointed out to the DPW and the contractor when they did the work about 10 years ago. That fell on deaf ears. Now you want me to pay $240 to correct that problem? I'm paying for your shoddy workmanship?
Well, I don't know about shoddy workmanship. That's something that can be investigated in terms of...
Well, if they would have shaved the roots further, as I asked them to do, those panels would not be raised. They didn't do it. And the guy in the yellow truck from Ferndale was there, and the contractor. Believe me, it fell on deaf ears. End of comment.
Anyone else who would like to address council on this public hearing this evening? If not, I will close the public hearing. I'd like to thank all the residents for coming out. If you did not come tonight, but you have a letter, please avail yourself of the phone numbers in that letter, either of our DPW department or of our engineers at Giffords Webster, who are more than happy to come out and take a second look at your sidewalk and make sure that what you were assessed in February, I mean, last fall, is still the case today. So with that, council, we need to take up the 2012 sidewalk replacement program. And let me just let council know that immediately before the council meeting, the Highway Committee met and made a recommendation to adopt the 2012, the committee, make sure I'm saying it right, the 2012 sidewalk replacement program for the city of Ferndale. So that is the recommendation of the Highway Committee. But what is the recommendation or pleasure of council this evening?
I would move that we approve the resolution to proceed with the 2012 sidewalk replacement program, and that the city clerk be authorized to sign that resolution.
Support.
Moved by Galloway, supported by Lennon. Councilman Lennon is a member of the Highway Committee, by the way. Is there discussion, questions on this program?
I have a question. What is different from the recommendation from this year versus last year, if any?
None.
So it's a straightforward carryover?
Same program, new part of the city. New area of the city. Yeah, I mean, you know, the price is slightly different because I get three bids every day, but same program. As I asked you.
And do we track complaints in an aggregate way? It seems like every year, I know we rotate through different sections of the city, and we capture the individual residents that ask us to come out there and look. But do we look at that data for trends to find out, you know, if we do consistently have problems with X, Y, or Z? Like, we called the contractor, you know, qualified. And I have no reason to question that at all. But do we know, you know, based on complaints from last year that keep coming up after the work or issues that come up? Do we trend that from year to year?
I haven't really seen a whole lot of, like I said, last year was my first year on the program. So I haven't, Georgie Concrete was the contractor last year. They're also the contractor this year. To date, I haven't got any complaints on their workmanship. So I haven't really tracked it because we haven't really had any. And typically, you know, within a year, a couple of years, you shouldn't, you shouldn't have those issues, so. And when we, when we make our recommendation, we do do reference checks. A lot of contractors we've worked with in the past, and so you have a good idea of what kind of work they do.
Are you...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. My question was to explore your question a little bit further. Yours was not only about complaints about workmanship, but also about maybe policy, as well as other issues that are affecting a homeowner outside of the contractor performing the work.
Yeah, I think we see similar issues come up year after year after year. And I never, you know, we address it as it comes up, you know, individually. But it would be helpful, I would think, to look at a longer view of the work that we do on this program over the years. And I understand it rotates every 10 years. But if we consistently find problems with city-owned trees, or we consistently find problems where, you know, plots are raised versus other, I would just, I'd really like to see what the quality issues are over time. Or perhaps quality's not the right word, but the complaints are the issues that the residents raise.
Yeah, and actually, we do keep track of, you know, every year we go through and we figure out, okay, out of this area, say we have 41% of the sidewalks, we have are trip hazards or stubbers. You know, 40% is due to cracked sidewalk. We do have that information and how it correlates, like, what if, you know, if there was a section that was replaced 10 years ago, whether it was cracked or not, why it was replaced. At this point, I can't give you an answer as far as that goes.
So I guess, like, to follow up, how long should this work last? You know, if you go in and you replace a piece, how long should that be good for?
Concrete typically lasts a long time. With sidewalk, any kind of sidewalk, you know, it's four inches of concrete on that. So it's, like anything else, it does move a little bit in the wintertime. You get water under there, you get frost, you get heave.
So I guess my question is, do we know if we're replacing the same pieces every 10 years? Do you know what I mean, where maybe it should last longer?
Yeah, and Matt, I can't give you an honest answer at this point. I mean, it's definitely something we could probably look into, but...
For example, if the gas company is a consistent issue year after year, you know, what steps can we put in place to help mitigate that with consumers? You know, I mean, it's that, those kinds of trending and issues, I'd be interested in looking at to see how we handle those on an ongoing basis.
Right.
I can follow up with you, Matt. And I think Councilman Lennon had a...
We did have, Danny, you can help me if I'm wrong, it was Mr. Taylor that handled the record-keeping and all that for the sidewalks, Chuck?
Chuck.
Tucker, Tucker, okay, that's close. So there might be, there might be some paperwork. He's no longer with us, but there might be some paperwork with the record-keeping back at the office at the DPW. But it looks like, Matt, you're going to be it this year to follow up maybe right now on these complaints.
Correct. And every year that I've been involved with it, we go through, and we have an ASBIL drawing for every property that we go to. So we actually, I think there were 429 properties this year, roughly. And we actually have an individual record drawing of that property, so we can tell which flags were replaced. We also have the same thing for last year.
A lot of it's on digital form.
Pardon me?
A lot of it is on digital form through a computer. We can, you know, share that information.
Okay, great. I thought you were...
Thank you. Additional comments or questions on this item? All right. It was moved by Galloway, supported by Lennon. No additional comments? Madam Clerk, could you call a roll?
Councilmembers Martin...
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yep.
Galloway?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. Council's anxious to vote tonight. That program is adopted for 2012. Thanks, everybody. Next item of business would be call the audience. Thanks, everyone, for staying with us. Forty-two minutes after the start of our meeting tonight. Call to audience, as you know, is 30 minutes now. More time needed at the end of the meeting. If needed, three minutes to speak on any issue that's not on the agenda, because you can speak to that issue when we get to it on the agenda. Give us your name and address. We'll write it on the sheet in the back.
Hi, all. This is Tiffany Gagne here. Holy cow, I don't think I've been in front of you, Mayor. Definitely not you, Councilwoman Martin. Nice to see you all. I'm here to complain, unfortunately, about our code enforcement. We have a home at 380 West Woodland, where a tree fell down about six weeks ago. The home is vacant. They came a couple of days later, took the rest of the tree down, but they've left a, an enormous chunk of wood sitting in front. I've contacted, gosh, more than once, more than three times. Actually, multiple neighbors have contacted. I was told three weeks ago that they were going to cite the people. They had a week to remove it. If not, DPW would remove it. That was two weeks ago. It's still sitting there. We have people whose homes they're trying to sell. This giant log is sitting in front of the place. There's raccoons living in the roof. The place is completely overgrown. I would request that the DPW shut the water off because there's critters crawling all over this place. And I'm pretty certain that many people know about this. I'm hoping, April, you can help us because our neighbors are so upset. This is ridiculous. And I want to know what we can do other than keep making phone calls. And here I am, appearing before you. You guys haven't seen me in months and months and months and months. So here I am, seeking assistance on behalf of our entire neighborhood. What do we do?
And I'm looking at our city manager. I'm guessing you may have heard about this?
380 West Woodland. And we would definitely appreciate it. There are so many critters crawling around there. And this, you know, when we're all trying to keep our properties up, to keep our values up, this is just a blight on our neighborhood. And I would appreciate, and on behalf of our entire neighborhood, and behalf of the city, if whatever you guys could do.
And I apologize, our Director of Community and Economic Development is not here tonight. I think he's on vacation, because he probably knows more specifics about what's going on there. But April will follow up with you, I assure you.
Thank you very much. And you can reach me at 248-542-8555 if you need any more information. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Roger Schmidt, President of the Ferney Historical Society. Mayor, council, nice to be back here in front of you again.
Good to see you.
Two things. I would like to thank the foundation for that generous grant. It will go a long way to solve our security issue and, putting it a little more bluntly, our theft issue. Last year at the open house, we got very busy, and we believe at that time someone walked off with four or five high school yearbooks. We didn't have enough people to keep an eye on the door. We've learned our lesson, but we were able to replace two of them, I think. So we're still looking for the others. But anyway, the other thing I'd like to talk to you about is the saga of the City Hall mural. Back in 1975, the Kiwanis Club commissioned a local Royal Oak artist, Vincent Lipowski, who just recently passed away, to paint a mural for City Hall in honor of the bicentennial. It was a depiction of George Washington in Valley Forge. It hung upstairs in the entranceway for, well, until two years ago, when the renovation took place, and it was taken down. When it did not reappear here at City Hall or at any other city building, we made some inquiries as to where it might be. We were repeatedly told that it was in storage.
Since it's a living room, actually.
Yeah, a little big for that. We asked Sean Slocum over at the yard if he would check, and he did, and said it's nowhere in the city in storage. He guaranteed us that. He made some other inquiries and was able to determine that it had been given to the contractor who did the renovations. And since it was a gift to the citizens of Ferndale, we didn't think that was right. He got me the name of the project manager, who was Christine Bunch at the Daily Company. I gave her a call. I said, asked her if she had the mural, and if so, could we get it back? She checked with the owner, Stephen Daly, and he confirmed that they did have the mural, and yes, they would be glad to give it back. At that point, I... At that point, I contacted the city manager, April Lynch, and she, asked her if she would assist us in getting it back, and she most graciously said yes. And we arranged again through Byron Fertides and Sean Slocum to get a truck. And actually, they borrowed a truck from the school board, which was the biggest one they had. So we want to thank the school board as well. Last Tuesday, two gentlemen from the yard, and Gary Andrews and myself, went out to the Daily Company in Lake Orion and retrieved our painting, or mural, if you will. And two hours after we got it back, it was hanging on the wall at the museum, so...
You have room? You have room?
Yeah.
Kind of. The big mural, I wondered where you were going to put it.
It's seven by 14, and it ate up a lot of wall space, but it's up.
All right.
So I invite you all to come and see the mural.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Glad we could help.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Evan Cecil. I was here on a matter regarding the parks and recreation. Roosevelt School located at Pinecrest and Ridge Road, or Pinecrest and Oak Ridge. There's a basketball rim there, a basketball court, and the rims have been removed, I believe, from an incident dating back to June 2010 or something. I was just wondering what we can do to get those rims back up, because now those rims have been taken down for two years. We really have had no place to play basketball, considering Wanda Park and even Gainesboro Park, rims are all down. I mean, we do have Washington School, but that's one of, you know, I think, for the last standing parks to have basketball rims still intact. So I was wondering if there's anything, you know, even the citizens, you know, could pull some money together, like, as far as me and a couple of people, and just put the rims back up? Or, I mean, if it's a funding issue, I understand that, but...
No, in fact, as you heard earlier, we're putting up removable rims in the parks. But I think the issue there is that school property, right, Jill? So that's actually not our park. That's our city park. That's a school property park. And I think that's an issue that you're going to have to address and I think that's an issue that you're going to have to address the school board on, or perhaps the principal.
Okay.
It's actually in Pleasant Ridge as well.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, I see. But you said there are being some sort of rims being put up around.
Well, in our city parks, we discovered that removable rims work really well, we can keep them up during the day and take them down in the evening so that kids aren't playing all night, and there was a presentation earlier, we're going to buy some more removable rims for our city parks.
Awesome, yeah.
I recommend, if you may, I recommend you go to the Ferndale Education Foundation because the Ferndale Community Foundation just gave a grant for these rims, so perhaps the Ferndale Education Foundation would be able to cover the costs for the rims for city, or for school-owned parks.
And she's on the board, so she knows where she's.
No, I'm not, yes, I'm on the Ferndale Community Foundation Board, not the Ferndale, no.
Yeah, that's right.
Not the Ferndale Education Foundation Board, but there is an opportunity to explore. Unfortunately, all of the expenses about what it takes to get removable rims has been figured out, so half the work has been done.
Excellent, cool, good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, good to see you.
Jeanne Davis. Jeanne Davis, I'm President of the Seniors, and I'm here tonight, as President of the Seniors, to announce that on July 25th, that's a Wednesday, the Seniors are having their annual Potluck Barbecue. And people bring a dish to pass, if they don't want to cook, they donate a couple of dollars, and we buy the meat, we don't actually barbecue it. But I'm also here to invite the entire council, as well as Commissioner Covey, who's here, and April, and Cheryl, and to please come and attend, and you don't have to bring anything, just your sweet faces.
What time is it at?
It's at 11 o'clock at the Kulik Center.
On July 25th?
On July 25th, that's a Wednesday. On July 11th, in a sort of a membership thing, we're having an ice cream social after our regular meeting, and we're, ice cream will be served by Scotty from Treat Dreams, and he'll have a special flavor in honor of us seniors. Don't say it, Dan. I know, he keeps saying that we should christen the new sign outside the Kulik Center with a bottle of Geritol.
Ouch.
And this coming Wednesday at 11 o'clock, we're entertaining the Royal Oak Bellringers, so if somebody wants to come in, if it's never heard the Bellringers before, it's very nice. And has everybody seen the new sign outside the Kulik Center?
Excellent.
Yes.
That's a gift from the Ferndale Senior Group to the city.
Thank you, and we very much appreciate it. It's a beautiful sign, thank you, seniors, for donating that to the city. You know, our budgets are tight, but apparently the seniors have a few extra bucks, so we appreciate that.
The seniors do indeed have a few extra bucks.
It's a gorgeous sign, and it's.
And by the way, we're casting a vote for something else to spend money on.
What would you want for City Hall?
You guys have any ideas?
We'd need one for City Hall.
Hmm, it'd have to be bigger than that, that would be a lot more. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeanne, very, very much. Anyone else who would like to address council during Call to Audience this evening? Hearing none, our closed Call to Audience, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, our items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion. I will read the consent agenda, and then I will ask for a motion of council. Item A, approval of the minutes for the special and regular meeting held June 11th, 2012. B, approval of the municipal and community credit contract for fiscal year 2013, and the authorization for the mayor to sign said contract. C, approval to accept the bid from Toshiba Business Solutions of Farmington Hills for the purchase price of $6,135, and an annual maintenance cost of $828, for a total of $6,963, as submitted by the fire chief. Approval of the low bid of $133,841 of Georgia Concrete on Sherwood Street in Detroit to replace sidewalks and handicap ramps from Eight Mile Road to Nine Mile Road, Republic to Pinecrest, charged to the expense of the public services code enforcement account. E, approval of the repair bill from AIS Construction Equipment Corporation for the city's 2009 Elgin Pelican Sweeper in the amount of $2,982.30. F, approval to adopt the resolution for claiming May 25th, 2012 as Arbor Day in the city of Ferndale. G, approval of the bills and payrolls as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of the council finance committee.
I've moved that we accept the consent agenda?
Support. Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. Any discussion on the consent agenda this evening? Either from members of the audience first, or from council? If not, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Lennon is absent. Galloway.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you. Those items are adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda, item A, consideration of Elster Water Meter Contract Amendment. And Mrs. Lynch, I'll have you introduce that item, please.
As you know, about two years ago, we began working with a company called Elster to replace our water meters for more of a radio feed automatic reading. Over the course of the last few years, Elster's been working very diligently to ensure that this project is completed and has found a few little glitches, and in that, they are here tonight to talk a little bit more about what's going on and what the plan of action is to complete this program. And with that, I'm going to introduce Tom, and I just failed to remember your last name, Tom.
Gwen.
Gwen, that's what it is, so we'll have him step forward and go ahead and just kind of give a brief overview of exactly what's happening and how we plan on, again, completing this program.
Mr. Gwen, good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, members of the city council, I'm here by invitation. I am the President of Elster Amco Water Company, we're a U.S. manufacturer of water metering systems, and we are currently the supplier of the system that is being put in the city. I'm here, unfortunately, because what has been installed isn't working as well as it should, and so I am here to answer questions, and before I do that, with your permission, I will give you a brief summary of what is working and what is not working, if that meets with your satisfaction.
Thank you, yes, that would be, that would be good.
Sorry to make you have to turn around.
We're used to it.
As April indicated, almost two years ago, we started installing almost 10,000 endpoints, as we call them, that would be water meters with the automatic meter reading equipment. This included what we call five EvoGates, which in a generic binocular means, five electronic boxes up on poles somewhere that listen to the data transmissions of all the water meters by radio frequency. Those five collectors and some additional equipment, seven EvoHops, as they're called, were to collect all the data from your water meters and provide them for billing purposes, thereby eliminating the need for manual meter reading with the associated cost efficiencies. The second half of this slide indicates that we have installed 9,616 brand-new water meters and radio endpoints, of which, look at the third bullet point, roughly 80% of these endpoints are reporting in today, which means 20% are not. We can discuss at length why that is the case, but to put it bluntly, that is unacceptable. I know it's unacceptable to the city, it is certainly unacceptable to Elster, and it is not an example of what we have done elsewhere, and it is not why the city selected Elster to deploy this water, this metering system. Tell you what, for the sake of time, let's just jump over that. If you will ignore, these are the five collectors that were installed in your city, and if you will ignore the downward blip there, because that was caused by some maintenance that we were doing, you'll notice that all of these collectors, at best, are collecting data from 80% of the meters or less. And I only provide that to you so that you can see graphically where we're at today, and so that hopefully you will understand that I'm not trying to hide from this problem. So we have looked very carefully at how to fix this problem. I'm going to show you the solution that we are proposing for the city, and before I do, I want you to understand that the solution is 100% at the expense of Elster. We don't expect the city to participate in this. Elster has a history of, the risk of sounding like a salesman here, we have a history of integrity in these types of systems, and we have no intention of letting this one fail. The system that you have installed today is a mesh system, as indicated by that lower left circle. It means that it was intended for each of the water meters to talk with each other if necessary, but eventually they would find their way back to the collector, and the data would be used for billing. In this way, in the case of, in the case of weather or natural disaster, the system was smart enough for the data to find its way home, even if its normal path got interrupted. In short, the collectors have not lived up to their promise in this case. So we are looking at what is called a STAR system. Elster offers more than one type of radio equipment. STAR systems are typically more expensive, which is why it was not proposed here. Also, the mesh systems tend to work very well in smaller cities, and 10,000 endpoints is typically a smaller city. Ferndale, unfortunately, was an exception to our experience in that case, and so we are proposing a STAR system, which is actually a more expensive system than what was originally contracted for installation. At this point, I'll pause, and if you've heard enough, we'll go right to the questions, or I'll give you just another three or four minutes on some of the salient differences between what you have and what you will be getting.
Keep, yeah, give us.
Okay.
Keep going.
Okay. You have, you have been, we have delivered to you a system that is commonly referred to as a 900 megahertz system. Many of you have bought telephones, wireless phones for your house, that were at 900 megahertz before they went to a different frequency in the recent past, and the reason for that is because a 900 megahertz system requires no FCC license for you to use and operate. Simplicity is the key there. You'll notice right here in the bottom left-hand corner, and this is, each of these bars represent transmit distance, how far the radio on each of your water meters will transmit. There are some, and this applies to everybody, not just Elster, there are some physics involved here that says that if you increase the, I'm sorry, if you decrease the frequency, in this case from 900 to 450 to 170, you can see a subsequent increase in transmit distance. In the case of Ferndale, that will, that will assure that the next time we do this, it's going to work. Secondly, if you increase the power, you're currently at a half a watt in each of your radios, to two watts, the transmit distance also increases. So this is where you are, and this is where we intend to put you. Now, these numbers are very theoretical, this is line of sight, this is laboratory stuff, so in reality, it won't look quite like this, but the relative comparison will be the same. So we are going to put a system in, or we're proposing a system, that will require only two, maybe three, but only two collectors instead of the five, meaning that the city will have less equipment to maintain, and the robustness of the system goes up. And I think that's enough of a, enough of a summary on it. One last point I'd like to make, and to me, this is a big one, and this is one I'd like you to take home with you tonight. All automatic meter infrastructure systems sold in this country, except for one, brings their meter data back to their collectors, and then on a regular interval, it is sent by GPRS or cell phones back to where the bills are created. And the system you have installed today is no different. It's called a cellphone backhaul. Every one of the collectors installed requires a cellphone contract, which means you pay every month for the data transmitted. This was all part of the original deliberation, and this is what was agreed to, no surprises here. The system we are going to be putting in will bring data from each of these endpoints to the collector and back to the billing office with no GPRS, no cell phones. The city will own, the city will own the entire infrastructure. Which means, and this is why this is important to you, which means that when a meter transmits its data within 30 seconds to a minute and a half, the data will be in your database, and the billing data will be as current as it can possibly be. There's no waiting at the collector for you to interrogate it at night or whenever, it flows right into your database, and you know instantaneously what is, what is being reported by that customer. That's one of the reasons it's a more expensive system, but we're absolutely committed to making sure that this time we walk away with a success story. And I think, I think we're about ready for questions.
Well, I appreciate Elster stepping up to the plate because the complaints have been numerous. If given the contract, when would the project start on replacing these?
In anticipation of a positive response from the city, forgive me, I didn't mention, this is a licensed system, which means an FCC license does have to be acquired, we do that for you. In anticipation of a positive response from the city, we went ahead and applied for the license six weeks ago. I'm sure the license will be available within the next two weeks, and once we have the license, we can begin.
Okay. How long would you anticipate that, how long would it take?
I will give you, I'm sorry, I didn't look at the project plan before I came in here.
Yeah, you know what, disregard that question.
It's several months, I mean.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm jumping the gun a little bit, yes.
It's certainly long before the end of this year, it's several months.
Okay.
May I ask, I appreciate your candidness, and with the issues that you've stated around frequency and the power resulting in the 20% not reported, correct, to, you know, automatically, but what I haven't heard addressed is, you know, when the meters went in, we immediately got a lot of complaints about the size of the increases of the water bills, and how has this affected accuracy? And with the systems in place, what assurance do we have that what has been reported automatically has been an accurate read versus what we were getting before?
Okay. When I say those are all great questions, I mean, we get asked those questions every place we go.
Sure.
First of all, every water meter that we have delivered to the city is put on a test bench, and we flow water through the water meter, and we flow water through the water meter at three different flow rates, and it has to pass the American Water Works Association standards for accuracy, or we don't ship it. But that's only half of the story. The other half of the story is, these are mechanical devices, which means they have something inside that are turning, and it's, it's this rotating element that allows us to keep track of the volume of water that passes through the meter, and the U.S. has been doing it this way for many, many, many years. And of course, I feel absolutely required to tell you that we do it better than anybody else. But, but part of this contract was to not only install wireless equipment to allow you to bill for consumption more efficiently, but part of this contract was to replace your existing water meters that were, on the average, 20 to 25 years old. Water meters, and I want, I want to be very careful here because it varies across the United States unbelievably. For example, a water meter in one area in the southeast, if it hasn't stopped turning by year 10, they replace it anyway. There's other places in this country where meters perform pretty well through year 20. Not very many places, but there are a few places. I have no idea if Ferndale is one of those places. The average meter life is 12 to 15 years, if you want any level of accuracy at all out of it. Because it's, because it is a mechanical device, water meters only do one thing over time, and that is slow down. They almost never, ever speed up, which means that replacing a population of meters that are 20 to 25 years old would suggest that it is very likely that most of those were under-registering, and you would ask by how much? Well, it could be anywhere from 5% to 30 or 50% at that age. Now, there wouldn't be very many at 30 to 50%, but I'm telling you that. Now, there wouldn't be very many at 30 to 50%, but I'm telling you that I think most expert opinions in the field would tell you that you were losing revenue as a result of inaccurate meters. And I believe that was one of the reasons you wanted to remeter your city. Which means that by definition, your revenues were going to increase.
So with this problem, there's only two results: a good read, that you're comfortable with the accuracy of, or no read at all. There's no room in the middle for inaccurate reads?
No. That would be an incorrect conclusion. The registers that you're using on this meter are of the latest generation, and I don't just mean Elster's technology, I mean, in the industry. They are called an encoded register, and by that I mean, the technology looks at the odometer wheels, determines the numbers on the odometer wheels, and then transmits that number. So theoretically, there should never be a disagreement. And certainly, 99% of the time or better, there is no disagreement. But no, technology is flawless. So there can be mistakes.
How can those be detected? If somebody's just sort of convinced that your new meter is not reading them right, is there a way to find that half a percent that are really...
Yeah, actually, there is. And there's two or three ways. One of the ways is with... And this was the intent with the system we installed, and it will be the intent with the one that we're putting in instead. It allows you to profile, or graph, or watch water consumption as it's reported by a customer. And if there are any significant changes, you can tell the software to raise a flag, and then the city can decide whether to ignore it or check it out. That's the first way. And by the way, this is an example of that sort of software, the graph in the bottom left-hand corner. And in this case, the writing is so small that I can't even read it from here, but that big bar on the left might represent an extraordinary event, and that might be the reason for checking something out. Second way is to put into this software, and it's at your discretion, a high-low limit, which means that each month, you know the consumption you're expecting to see. If you see consumption that's way above that, it immediately tells you.
Excuse me, is that for individual residences?
Yes.
For the city itself?
For every customer.
Okay.
Keep for one second?
Yeah.
That would show you if, say, it was an abandoned house, and somebody spilled water, or somebody broke the pipes, and there was a flood?
Okay.
The software would tell you, hey, something's going on here, it should be looked at.
And that comes back to City Hall here?
Yes. This software is on the city's computer.
And just one more, and I won't take up any of Elster's time. Would that go to your office over DPW?
Yes, it's a computer-based program.
So you get that info too?
I'll access it too.
Would we literally have the staffing power to respond? I mean, how... If you install those on every house, could you get overwhelmed to the point where it was meaningless, because you got so many that we literally wouldn't have the personnel to respond, or is it a fairly rare event when something is outside of the range?
Well, at the risk of sounding trivial, it's up to you. The high-low limits can be set very tight, or they can be set very wide. And if you're only looking for extraordinary events, where there's a significant leak, and you don't want somebody's basement filling with water while they're gone on vacation, and you want to be proactive and prevent that, you can even tell the system to send an email message to somebody, so he doesn't even have to come back to the computer to find it.
I don't see it being an issue of being overwhelmed with them. Even if we were, we would divide it up, you know, so many per day, and we have to...
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, I have just one more question. To clarify the 20% that isn't reporting today, is that the same 20% of houses, or does that roll? So like, today my house may report, next month it doesn't?
Some of them are simply not reporting in at all.
And that's consistent every...
But there's another part of that 20% that moves around.
And what are those customers experiencing now? If their meter isn't transmitting data, did they get a bill that had nothing?
We are paying for a contractor to manually read these meters in the city, so that you still get the data. And that is something Elster is paying for.
I have a question about the switch. When you go from the mesh to the STAR?
Yes.
Are the 80% who are currently functioning properly, are they going to be affected anyway? Are they going to see a blip in their billing?
They should not, because we're not going to touch the water meter. We're going to put a new radio on the outside of the house, and so the reported consumption should stay consistent with the past.
With a higher report rate, we'll have the tools to find that blip if those are...
Absolutely.
And then my final question is, how are we informing and communicating with the residents who are part of the 20% about what they should expect, and how do they...
Forgive me if I'm wrong, it's not 20%, we're replacing all of them, right?
Oh, yeah, we're going to do the entire city.
You're doing the entire city over again?
Yes.
Because it's not a set 20%, some of those, intermittent failures.
Okay, well, I expand that to the 100%. How are we informing the residents about what's going to happen, and when should they expect to receive something in the mail, and why we're doing this?
Sure. The first step is talking about it tonight. I'm actually, I've asked you to... We'll ask again to actually table the contract. We just want to work with Dan Chris a little bit more to make sure we're all comfortable with the contract. But once that gets approved, and we are... The FCC license comes through, and we have some kind of plan, we would, of course, do a media blitz, let people know. The difference is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, we do not need to go into people's homes this time. It's outside their house, so there needs to be no appointments or anything like that.
That's good to know.
But still, when somebody comes, you know, around your house, you probably want to know when they're going to come. So as soon as we have a timeline, we'll definitely start promoting that through our media channels, Facebook, website, all of the different... Put it on our water bills, things of that nature. So we'll do the best that we can to let people know that. That's probably, what, two minutes a house that you'll be at, or I don't remember what you told me, but...
Well, I sure hope it's two minutes, but it'll probably be more like 10.
Okay. So again, they're not going in the home this time, which is very different than last time.
And 99% of these radios are installed on the outside of buildings, so there's very few that are going to require entrance. Remember, last time, we replaced the water meters, and that required that we get inside. This time, it will not.
And then my final question is about warranty. I really appreciate your honesty and just directness with us tonight, but what is... Can you review the warranty on the new system that we're getting, so we know that if we do have problems down the road? I fully expect that you would be here again, and I don't expect to have these problems again, but I want to know what the backup contingency plan is.
Sure. April, would you like me to handle that?
Yes, please.
Okay. First of all, the warranty on the radio is different than the warranty on the meter. The meter has a 10-year warranty on the register against manufacturer's defect, and the water meter has a, I believe it's a 15-year warranty. In essence, we're talking about the top of the meter and the bottom of the meter here. The bottom of the meter is a bronze housing, and so it's actually explosion-proof. But the register, where all of the magic happens, and where all of the gears are, and where the wear occurs, is a 10-year warranty. The radio is a, what we call a 10-10 warranty, which means that you get a flat 10 years for all practical purposes, bumper to bumper. If it fails, it gets replaced. The second 10 years is prorated, and so we will honor part of the list price value. So by year 20, it has no value.
Thank you. So I would assume then, in year 20, is that how you mentioned before, the prior meters only have a lifespan of so long? Would we be doing this again in 20 years, or less than that, or it just depends, or...
Well, I will plead some ignorance on that question, because some cities will sample test meters over time, so that they can get an idea of how well the system is doing, so that when the time comes to replace the whole system, you know, they can forecast that. Other cities, because that's expensive, requires not only human time, but equipment, just decide that they're going to replace their meters every X number of years, and it just becomes a program expense. And I'm afraid I can't comment on what the attitude is on that here at Ferndale.
Well, if... I may. It sounds like he recommended that we get new meters after 15 years. It seems like the 20 to 25-year range that we waited to get new meters was over the recommended timeframe, so we would need to project 15 years out from now that we would be...
And as you have noticed, the increased revenue tends to justify the expenditure on the new meters, although it's very painful for your citizens, because they've gotten used to the revenues being at a, shall I say, a depressed level. And when they're returned to an equitable level, then it causes pain. And by the way, the city of Ferndale is by no means the only place in this country where that has happened. It's a very common dilemma for cities that are remetering their water systems.
My water bill went up with the new meter, so I was one of the people.
And Dan was glad to pay it.
I think we all were.
So did I. And I want to follow up too, a little bit more on Councilwoman Martin, if you don't mind. I don't know if I missed that, or if I maybe just assumed. We talked a little bit about questioning those residents that just truly believe that the meter's being read incorrectly. And you talked a little bit about the blips and the highs and the lows, but what about just, there is no blip, it's a constant, consistent, but it's been consistently constant, significant increase throughout the last year or two, and let's just say a resident just firmly believes that is not... It's not an accurate reading, but there's no blip. How do you go about that, if at all possible, to confirm that that is indeed the correct read?
Again, there's more than one way, but one way that might be, require the least amount of investment of time for the city, would be to simply replace the meter. And then, two things. See if it changes for a new meter. And secondly, send the meter to Elster. We will test it, and we will tell you what the accuracy of that meter is at that moment in time. Now, unfortunately, there is a charge for that. But if you put in a new meter, and the consumption level doesn't change, then I would argue you don't need to send us the meter to have it tested, because you've just proved yourself that... I mean, the chances of both meters being bad is very, very, very low. And because these are what are called positive displacement meters that you have purchased, while it doesn't work the way a combustion engine does, you know that for every stroke of the piston in a combustion engine, there is a very fixed volume, you know, of fuel that has gone in there. And it's the same thing in a water meter. For every rotation of the piston, there is a fixed volume of water. So it's very hard to fool them. And so we either built it wrong, and delivered you a meter that is not operating correctly, or it's right. And that's why I started this discussion by assuring you that every single water meter is tested before we ship it to you.
We've had several complaints about meters not being accurate, so we sent them to an independent testing facility, not Elster. The facility, people would say, well, it's Elster's meter, and they say it works 100%.
Great idea.
And they've come back 100%. Now, we've been telling residents that, yes, we'll test your meter, and if it comes back 100%, you're going to have to pay for that testing. If it doesn't, you know, the city will absorb that. So far, I've been here 19 years, I've never seen a meter overread.
Only underread, okay. Thank you, Dan.
Except on your house.
Yes, on mine.
All right. Any other questions or comments? As April said, we're going to table the contract tonight, only because Dan hasn't had an opportunity...
He just had a few more questions, nothing major.
...before tonight, so we're not ready to vote on the contract tonight, but we appreciate you being here to address the concerns and quality issues that have happened.
My goal was to give you some comfort. I hope I've done that.
Thank you, you were well-prepared. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
So our intent is to bring that back on July 9th.
On July 9th, we will address the contract with Elster. Thank you.
Elster.
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 Elster. All right. Thank you. So we will table item A, the rest of item A, and we'll move on to regular agenda item B, consideration of Ask Me Local 3120 contract.
Yep, I'm going to bring Jenny up on this one, yeah?
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm very excited to report this evening that this will be the last open labor agreement that we will have settled prior to expiration. We worked very hard with our Ask Me Local 3120 DPW yard unit over the last few months in developing this contract, and we feel that this is a very good bridge to get us through 2014. So this contract would encompass two years, expiring June 30th of 2014. Again, this unit was very forthcoming with accepting 0% wage adjustments, so no raises for the life of this contract. In addition, all the benefit changes afforded to all the other groups, consistent with the most recent contracts we've settled as well. Couple of things I was really excited to see is some expression from the unit in increasing some of their retirement vehicles, whether that be by way of a 401A increase, or retiree health savings increase, all paid by employee additional contributions. So what that says to me is our employees are committed to saving for their retirement in any way, whether that be themselves, or working with the city in that direction. So with that, we're asking for approval to enter into this agreement.
Just one question. Was this all handled internally? I know I saw the contract, you know, a few weeks ago, so I don't have any questions regarding the contract, so...
Yes.
This is all handled internally, because you know my question I'm going to ask is, was the labor attorney used?
No.
Very good. Very good work, Jenny.
Thank you.
I would also, before you vote, like to congratulate Jennifer, who over the weekend just passed her senior HR professional certification, so the highest...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Well, I'll just add, like I have, each time you bring us contract, I appreciate our employees' cooperation and sharing in the sacrifice that all the employees are making. This is now the last contract, as you said, that we need to close for this period. We'll have some coming up, but we're now... All our employees are under contract, and have all made sacrifices to share in the pain of, the financial pain of our times. And so appreciate your work, and appreciate the employees who have stepped up to negotiate this deal with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
We need a motion.
Oh, we have another motion.
I'll move that we authorize the attached changes to the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Ferndale and Ask Me Local 3120 for the period of July 1st, 2012, through June 30th, 2014.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Galloway. Any further questions, comments on this item? Now, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes.
Thank you, that I approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. All right, that brings us to call to council. I see our police chief here this evening. Chief Collins, anything for the good of the city this evening?
Just to follow up, Your Honor, from last two weeks ago, we spoke of the synthetic marijuana thing, and the state has now passed a statute that is going to assist us in enforcing any type of problem that may crop up in the future. So we are now armed with a... Although the city's still looking into a city ordinance, we now have the state law to help us out there. So we really appreciate the folks in Lansing, they really got off the dime and did some magic for us.
Thanks. Thanks, Chief. Thanks, thanks, Chief. Chief Sullivan, anything from the fire department this evening?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, got a couple of things. Number one, Sergeant Ken Croner retired. Uh, his last official day will be July 8th. His last working day was the 17th. So if anyone saw the parade through town, that's kind of his last ride home. But see if they don't live local, we take them from one station to the other symbolically. Uh, then we have had a couple of fires. Um, there's concern because, uh, we had a fire on Withington which did substantial damage to a kitchen. And, uh, the cause of the fire was discovered by the fire marshal to be a modified appliance. Now, whether the homeowners did this or they got a used appliance from someone else and they had modified it. Someone had cut a small gas feed line in the back of the unit. So the guy threw his food in the oven, went up to take a shower, and the gas was leaking out, finally hit the plug that the 110 function of the gas appliance was plugged into and ignited a substantial fire, burning up most of the kitchen and smoke damaging rest of the home. Luckily, both persons got out of the house okay. And, um, we just would recommend that if you are getting appliances or buying used appliances, you should probably have them checked out by an appliance professional before engaging them in use in your home. This one could have done serious damage and even caught someone off guard and potentially taken a life. Now, we also had a fire on Saratoga. This one was a compost pile against the garage. So if those people out there are gardening and composting, compost piles can start their own fires, uh, so they should be like toward the back fence and away from any buildings or any wood. If the back fence isn't chained, it should be away from wooden fences and that. And then if you put your illegal, um, burning pit that you bought at the local Kmart or whatever up against the compost pile after having used it, it's almost a sure thing that it's going to start on fire and burn a good chunk of your garage away. So that would be a caution for anyone doing that. Burning is illegal, even though everyone buys these things everywhere, chimneys, et cetera, they are not allowed by state law and by city, uh, ordinance. Um, the third or fourth thing, uh, cert team, we're near the end of our basic training. Uh, we'll be working on background checks. I have most of them finished. Uh, I'll be working with Chief Collins on getting some IDs, although the county just sent me a thing that they want to uniform the ID process. So, um, we'll see about that. And then we're organizing so that the, the group we have can be spread out more, um, across the field. So if there's something occurring, each person's will be in teams that'll take units within the city. Uh, we're well-equipped and almost, almost ready to go. Radios are working pretty good. And then last but not least, Councilman Lennon inquired today about the platform, seeing it everywhere around town. We've seen it a lot, we're, we're doing all kinds of drivers' training and, and functionality with the new platform, so it's not being called for anything like the van fire. It's just out driving about, getting the guys familiar with it, because it's a little bit longer and a lot bigger than our previous ladder truck. So when you turn, it can damage things, uh, so we want to make sure that everybody's good at turning. So we're starting out with an easy route, then a medium route, and a more difficult route as to prevent severe damage to people's vehicles throughout the city. Any questions?
Appreciate all of that. Any questions to the panel? You've got a lot of good stuff tonight, thank you. Uh, Dan, anything from DPW to want to share with us? In the absence of the vacation of our director, thank you. Jill, anything from the recreation department this evening?
Good evening. I'd like to start out by thanking the foundation for awarding us the grant for removable basketball rims. Um, we currently have one installed at the Kulik Center. And so far, we've spent it for a couple of months. So far, we've received some positive feedback from, um, our neighbors surrounding the center and we hope that, um, tip the same success in some of our other basketball courts throughout the city. Also to echo Jeannie Davis, I'd like to thank our Ferndale senior group for, um, donating a brand-new sign for the Kulik Center. I think it's a great addition to our, not only the city, but, um, the center itself. So thank you to them. And just one quick announcement, um, the Kulik Center is a site for the Ferndale Schools' free summer food program, um, starting today through the end of August. We will be serving breakfast from 9:30 to 10:30 and lunch will be served from 11:30 to 12:00, 11:30 to 12:30. These meals are open to anyone under the age of 18, so hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Uh, Madam Clerk, there's a, there's an election coming up, I bet you have something to say about that?
There is, thank you. Uh, for the August 7th primary election, electronic ballots are currently available for military and overseas voters. Um, they can just email us a request and we can send those out immediately. We have received our AV ballots and the programming for our tabulators, we still need to test those. We are anticipating mailing AV, the first bulk of AV ballots on Thursdays. Just want voters to know that they can request an AV ballot up until 4:00 PM on Monday, August 6th. So don't think that you're too late, you've got plenty of time. Reminder that Ferndale is now operating only seven precincts. It starts with this August 7th election. Voter ID cards with the information on your new precinct number and your new polling location are being mailed this week. Please look for those. They're small postcard with red, white, and blue graphic. Um, if you don't get one within the next two weeks, please call our office and let us give you the information on where do you go to vote. Thank you. I have a question. Sure. Are you anticipating longer lines? Longer lines? Yeah, because you're consolidating. Oh. I'm anticipating longer lines because this is a very long ballot and it's a partisan ballot and you cannot cross over between the Republican and the Democratic Party. So we will have a lot of spoiled ballots, people who make mistakes and need to replace their ballot and start over again. We will have, um, more than the statutory, um, number of voting booths set up, so we will try and keep the voters moving through. You always do an excellent job, so thank you. And our inspectors are getting more and more proficient on the electronic poll books, so that is helping to move lines along as well.
Thank you, thank you very much. City manager, April Lynch.
Yes, thank you. I noticed. Thank you. It's so a little weird for me. Um, we are very excited to speak. Staff is starting to kick off to, uh, the redesign of our website. So we will start meeting with our vendors to start the whole process and, and the timeline and the plan of action for that. Um, also, as many of you know, there was, um, power outage, I believe on Sunday. Um, I did put a call in to Mr. Pelchesko who was trying to find out the exact cause of that. I, I do understand it was a short time span, but I'd still always like to know why and, and what's going on with that. So as soon as I know more, I'll make sure that, um, we have that information. And a friendly reminder that with next week being July 4th, um, that City Hall will be closed on Wednesday, July 4th, but we'll reopen again on Thursday.
Thank you. If folks didn't notice, the next gentleman is not Dan Chris. I'm calling it for Dan Chris tonight very ably and very quietly. John Scarran, ending from the legal perspective.
Uh, nothing other than my pleasure to be here before you tonight in Dan's absence. I'll try not to be so talkative in the future.
Thank you. Councilman Martin?
Uh, the only thing I have is I just want to congratulate the folks who ran the food truck rally this weekend. It was well-attended and there was a great representation. Uh, and it was a good time, so nice, nice event, great summer day.
Yeah, just to bounce off what Dan said, the last couple of weeks, there was so much vibrancy in this town, there's been so much going on. And it's just, it's a pleasure just to be around everything, you know, and so I like what's happening in this town. Um, we're always the leader in, in events and what have not, so let's continue, have a good summer.
Amen, amen. Uh, Councilwoman Piana?
I have three, well, I have four things. Um, I wanted to say congratulations to April.
Thank you.
On your merit. And you are April Lynch.
Yep.
April Lynch, not McGrath.
No.
Um, that will take a long time to switch over, but forgive me for calling you McGrath for months forward. Um, the other one is, is, um, I wanted to just sort of convey our experience working with the Better Buildings for Michigan program. So my husband and I had a home energy audit about a month ago. Um, and we are DIYers. We do everything ourself on our home. And my husband was like, we're gonna, we're gonna do these upgrades on our own. And then you sit back and you look at all the rebates you're going to get, and then you realize it would cost you more to actually buy the materials versus having someone come in and do the materials and labor and do it properly and correctly and save you four weekends of your summer. Um, so we had a 78% savings in terms of our, uh, rebates that we were allocated to our total cost of our program. So, uh, we are getting blown insulation in our attic and a couple other fixes in our basement, um, that were demonstrated as part of the blow test where the air comes through your house. So, um, so we're going to be part of, uh, decreasing our efficiency and hopefully lowering our energy costs. So this program is going on until December of next year, so please, uh, take a look at it. It really may help you out, um, with, uh, the, the, um, rebates, uh, that are available. And then, um, April, I was just more of encouragement, the DDA, um, talked about the Training Wheels Project. And I am really encouraging the police chief and the fire chief to find their bicycles and the DPW to send representatives to, um, check out this Training Wheels Program because, um, I know our non-motorized plan is intended to be slated with the, um, master plan update next year. Um, and this is part of the Complete Streets and Moving Forward. And the Woodward Avenue Action Association is about to kick off their year-long Complete Streets Project and this goes in align with any transportation assessment. So it's my hope that our public safety leaders, um, our leaders in non-motorized transportation for our community. And so I think, um, you guys can really set a precedence in learning how, in teaching other cities about how they can ready themselves for improved non-motorized, uh, options. And so encourage you to go on the 18th. And then the final one, uh, final, um, item is something that was brought up by, uh, during the call to audience, um, through Tiffany Gagné. But I've also heard other, uh, residents complain, uh, more recently about, um, foreclosures. And prior to your tenure, April, um, as well as Derek's, there was a, uh, foreclosure task force put together, but it was mostly comprised of city staff and it wasn't, uh, comprised of any, uh, homeowners or residents to give input about how to make that task force, um, sustainable, um, if staff left. Um, but I'm, I think we may need to revisit that task force and its intent and purpose and revisit if we have any other foreclosure code enforcement type of, uh, challenges that, uh, we may need to address, uh, more intently. So I also know that foreclosure and code enforcement, uh, we do need support from community residents. This is not all a city thing to tackle on its own. So perhaps there's opportunity there to explore where that is. And since we learned about, you know, since I've been on council in the last year and a half, we haven't had sort of a where are we with our foreclosures? So if we could ask Derek, um, where we are with that process, um, not only just with the CBDG money to deal with the 28 homes that we purchased, but also, um, just kind of generally. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Galloway?
Nothing from me this evening, just hope everyone has a happy safe 4th of July.
Good. And just, just one thing for me, and it's kind of a somber thing, but, um, over the weekend, there was a tragic accident that happened. Um, a 36-year-old male Ferndale resident was killed in a motorcycle accident on 696. Um, I want his family to know, our thoughts and prayers are with them. Um, it's a terrible thing to happen. Um, I also want to mention that he had a, uh, female passenger on his motorcycle as well, and she escaped with cuts and bruises. And the difference in this accident was that she was wearing a helmet and he was not. And I know that the state law changed a couple of months ago, but just because you can do something doesn't mean you should do something. And I want to just encourage our residents who ride motorcycles to remember this tragic incident and maybe keep the helmet on even if you don't have to. Um, your family would appreciate it, I'm sure. Uh, and with that, meeting is adjourned.